Well, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna mute you. And just so we keep feedback to a minimum. Again, we are sharing the co-hosting duties here in the Senate office. And you have had, I think, the pleasure of having Pastor Phil Tonason and Pastor Sarah Elderton and Deacon Tammy Jones West all step in. And so I'm back. I admit to you that my other colleagues that I see on this screen have been way more faithful with Bible study because the my family's life has been a little crazy. So I loved Week One, y'all, and I'm excited to see what has transpired in the three weeks in between. And we'll catch up with the story along the way. And I'd love to be able to say, Bishop Smith is covering this. I don't even know. So we're in for it together today. But again, it's good, good to be with you. We are grateful for the ways that we get to walk together and learn from the Word of God together in this time. So I'm gonna invite you to a moment of prayer and then Bishop Smith, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, also with you.
Good and gracious God, thank you for today for the opportunity to study your word and to allow it to be opened along with our hearts so that we might be encouraged these journeys of faith that we might know you more deeply so we serve our neighbors well. Gracious God, continue to abide with us in this season of chaos and turmoil and political ads and all the things. Gracious God, may we feel your presence, may we feel the gift of your grace, and may we feel your peace from the top of our heads to the tips of our toes, knowing that you abide deeply with us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And I also want to take just a moment to add to that prayer because what Pastor Danielle didn't tell you is, yeah, she sort of alluded to it, but they just came late this afternoon from the hospital in Winston, like the fourth time in the last month. And their son Moses, brilliant, sweet little fella, three years old, champion puzzle worker and baker of cakes and lots of other things. He's had two surgeries on his chin and there's just been lots of infection for this cyst. And it looks like there's going to be a third surgery and that's probably yet a month away and in between packing the wound and everything. And so Pastor Danielle's had a hard time. So can let's pray for Moses. Gracious God, we lift up in particular servant Moses. What a, what a name to carry as your servant in the faith. And he is such a faithful young man. He's confused and he's frustrated as any of us would be. But we are thankful even so for his loving parents and for good doctors. And we pray that even though we hoped and prayed for different news today, that the third time will be the charm and that you give his parents an abundance of patience and endurance and resilience through this to be there and the love on him. And always gotta pray for his little sister Olive. Bless for Mama Danielle and Daddy Michael and help them to be gentle with themselves and get this little boy well, in the name of Amen.
Amen. Thank y'all for that. I appreciate you holding him in prayers.
All right, well, let's, let's jump to where we are here, shall we? And what I want to do is is say, welcome to our welcome to our Harris and Pence debate, which is starting right now. And in fact, I'm amazed that we have like 115 people or so here tonight because that debate is tonight, but that's not why we're here. And we're assuming that a lot of people are actually a major, great majority of people are listening to our recordings of these Bible studies at this point. And I'll be listening to highlights and recordings of the debate tomorrow. But we're actually in the Gospel of Mark, chapters nine and 10. And remember, there are 16 chapters in Mark and we sort of hit that turning point last week. And then again, this week, sort of the Peter's confession of Jesus as the Messiah after this big secretive, who is this guy? Where does he get this authority? Even the wind and the seas obey him. And so chapter eight ends in a sort of a strange place on this teaching on discipleship. But I wanted to make a structural observation for us. Right here, if you start toward the end of chapter eight, where we were last week at the end in Mark, there are three sets, three sets of passion predictions. Right after that, some kind of instruction or call to discipleship, which is to say that we are called as disciples to share in suffering. And I do believe sometimes when we are zealous and when we get, you know, all of this excitement and passion around causes that we have, that we believe are indeed righteous causes, and we may think that very with, with a lot of integrity, actually. But one of the things I think we often forget is that costs something. It costs a lot to take a just stance. And here the example is set by Jesus. So after the instructions to and call to discipleship, and then there are three different misunderstandings where it gets worse and worse and worse with each progressive passion prediction. Oh, no, 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 I've got to suffer. To be a disciple means you have to suffer too. And then the disciples do something really ignorant or even stupid, it seems. My mom didn't like me to use that word. But and all of these passion predictions are sandwiched, remember we said last week, between two healings of blind men, which is quite symbolic in this inclusio, the biblical scholarship word is not sandwiched, but inclusio, which means between these two healings of blind people, which highlight the blindness of the disciples in getting who Jesus is and who they're called to be. There are these two physical healings of blind people. So just keep that in mind as we're looking at this tonight. So really, the beginning of chapter nine is just the transition from where we were in chapter eight. You remember the original manuscripts, which we do not have available to us, had neither chapter nor verse numberings within them. And so these are imposed later by, you know, biblical printers into sections. So it's a little bit arbitrary, but I'm going to start with verse two in this, this famous Transfiguration piece. This is, I want you to be thinking about the baptism at the beginning of Mark's Gospel, the voice, you know, from heaven that says, "In Mark's Gospel alone, not this is my beloved son," as if the voice is talking to all of us and all of the crowd, "but you are my beloved son," as if the voice is only talking to Jesus in the singular. And but now at the Transfiguration, you're gonna get a similar voice, a similar message, but it's talking to everybody. So you see that progression. Peter says, hey, you're the Messiah. No big fanfare in Mark's Gospel. You're the Messiah. Jesus says, right, and here's what it means to be the Messiah. And if you want to follow me, you're going to have to suffer as well. Take up your cross and follow. So you get the Transfiguration, often in a theophany, an appearance of God. There are often two things really that we get throughout the Old Testament. One is a mountain. Almost always it's a mountain where God appears, not always, but almost always. And there's also usually a cloud that God somehow speaks in the cloud or from the cloud or through the cloud. And so, you know, that's why they say the ancient Moses, not Danielle's Moses, was maybe the first to download something from the cloud, namely the Ten Commandments on, you know, Mount Sinai. But anyway, the inner circle of disciples, Peter, James, and John, remember, they were the Fisher folk who Jesus called first, took them up to a high mountain apart by themselves, and he was transfigured before them or transformed. It could be translated either way. His clothes became dazzling white. You know, that's very much like the vision in the book of Revelation of who is this, who is this crowd robed in white? It's just a Jewish apocalyptic sort of vision of the fullness of all things, the end times, such as no one, or actually in the Greek it says no fuller, but we don't use that word anymore in English really so much. Could bleach them. A fuller is a bleacher of cloth. And there appeared to them, okay, some Hall of Fame people, right? Elijah and Moses. And remember, John the Baptist is sort of thought to be the reincarnation of Elijah, who has to proceed Messiah. So you get, you get the law and the prophets essentially, Moses and Elijah. And they're talking with Jesus like this conversation. And Peter says, Jesus Rabbi, it's good for us to be here. Let's make three dwellings, one for you, one for Moses, one for Elijah. The Greek word for dwellings, tents or tabernacles, which again, it was often thought that in a theophany, if God were not on a mountain or in a cloud, that God could be somehow contained in a tent. You remember Ark of the Covenant and, you know, the tabernacle that they carried around and erected to put the Ark of the Covenant in because that's where God would dwell. But it's really interesting to me because Peter essentially is babbling here. He's making no sense. Verse six kind of hints that to us. He didn't know what to say. But they were terrified. I mean, he was just, he was talking crazy talk. And he's also playing capture the moment, which I know that your congregation never wants to capture the moment because they're always looking forward into the future where from which God already beckons us. But I have been to some congregations that that really are all about preserving the moment and living in the moment forever. And that's, it's not such a great thing. And the cloud overshadowed them. And this is wonderful because God interrupts Peter and the voice from heaven says, this is my son. Now that's for everybody to hear, the beloved. And then you get a command that was not at the baptism, listen to him. So a direct command from God that now the three inner circle disciples see it. Now only Jesus is there. Wow. That's always the text, you know, at the end of the epiphany, Sundays after epiphany season that's right before Lent. Because when Jesus comes down the mountain, remember our maps that we've been looking at. Jerusalem is so far south that it's not even on the maps where all of this is happening in the Gospel of Mark around the Sea of Galilee and up in Tyre and Sidon on the Mediterranean coast. And then up way up north in Caesarea Philippi, then he goes up on the mountain. And as soon as in all of the Gospels, when Jesus comes down from the mountain of Transfiguration, he heads to Jerusalem. And he doesn't go to Jerusalem any other time in Mark's Gospel. This is the first time. And he goes to Jerusalem for one purpose when he comes down off the mountain. And what is that one purpose? To die. That's why he's going because remember, we have been told that after the regular scribes and Pharisees who are the locals got concerned about Jesus and his authority, that they sent scribes and Pharisees from Jerusalem, the inner circle, and they've been following him around. Now he's going to Jerusalem. It's not going to go well. And that's why he keeps predicting his death. So now again, every time, unless it's a demon, they were coming down the mountain. He said, don't tell until after the Son of Man is risen from the dead. Now I'm gonna go ahead and be a spoiler here. But he talks about the Son of the Man, the Son of Man being risen from the dead. But I'm just gonna tell you, and this is confusing and disturbing, but in Mark's Gospel, by all accounts of any scholar, basically any flavor with any academic credentials, the Gospel of Mark doesn't have a resurrection in it. Now it does, but it's clearly in a different style of Greek, using different vocabulary and everything else that are, it's about eight, 10 verses that are added on at the end, which everyone believes are a redaction or an addition quite a bit later. Because, and I think in Mark's Gospel, but he does talk about the resurrection right here. Okay. So, so I'm not saying that it doesn't happen, but it's not explicitly announced. And there are no witnesses of the resurrection in Mark's Gospel. All you have is an empty tomb. And everybody's terrified and amazed and frightened and they go home. And that's the end of the Gospel of Mark. But here it says that the Son, until after the Son of Man is risen from the dead. Remember Pharisees didn't get along with Sadducees because Sadducee said, absolutely not, there can be no resurrection from the dead. We don't need that because we have the law and our eternal life is in our children and our progeny. But the disciples in verse 10 are questioning, what does this rising from the dead mean? They ask him, "Why do scribes say that Elijah must come first?" And he said, "Elijah is indeed coming first to restore all things." Again, we think Jesus is talking about John the Baptist. The last verse, verse 13, "I tell you Elijah has come, and they did to him whatever they pleased, as it is written about him." What did they do to John the Baptist? What did Herod do in Mark's Gospel, that horrid thing with Salome, the erotic dancer? Child pornography, you know, first century Palestine style. You know, they killed him. They cut his head off, abused his body. So now you get this sort of aside, oh yeah, but while he's going, he's still doing these same things, healing. You see this boy, the scribes are arguing with this crowd, the whole crowd, they're immediately overcome with awe. They ran to greet Jesus and ask him, "What are you arguing about with them?" And somebody said, "Teacher, I brought to you my son." The spirit makes him unable to speak. Whenever it seizes him, it dashes him down. He foams and grinds his teeth and becomes rigid. I mean, that sounds a whole lot like an epileptic seizure, doesn't it? And I asked your disciples to cast it out, but they couldn't do it. And then Jesus says, because he's getting pretty frustrated with his followers now and their lack of understanding, you faithless generation. I'm getting old enough now that, that I can understand, you know, sort of what my parents used to say and my grandparents used to say, all this new generation. Let me just tell you, this new generation, that saying's been around for thousands of years. You faithless generation, how much longer must I be among you and put up with you? I'm disgusted with you. Bring him to me. And they brought the boy. And when the spirit saw him and immediately it convulsed the boy and he fell on the ground and rolled about foaming at the mask. And Jesus said, hey, how long has this been happening? And the daddy says, from childhood and cast him into the fire and water to destroy him. But if, if you're able to do anything, have pity on us and help us. Jesus is, I don't know if he's tired or he's just fed up with all this. He's like, if you are able, all things can be done for the one who believes. Now remember, we already know that because he said to a couple of women already, you know, "Your faith has made your daughter well, or great is your faith." And I love this prayer. It's one of the best prayers and pleas, I think, in all of Scripture and for me today. I love this prayer. Immediately the father of the child cried out, "I believe, help my unbelief." We Lutherans really latch on to that, don't we? We're the only real Christian denomination that when somebody says, "Well, what is your sort of foundational primary belief?" And we quote to Martin Luther's third article of the Apostles' Creed, explanation, "I believe in the Holy Spirit, which means I believe I cannot by my own reason or strength believe in Jesus Christ, my Lord, or come to him. But the Holy Spirit's called me through the Gospel and lighted me with his gifts and sanctified and kept me in the one true faith. And in the same way, he calls, gathers, enlightens, and keeps the whole Christian church on earth," and so on, and so on, and so on. But so this, what, what we say is, what we believe is that we can't believe. And do you see why this is so important for us as Christian people, why this is so essential as Lutheran Christian people? That so many people say, well, it's all about God's grace. It's all about God's mercy. And all you have to do is what? Believe. But, but see, no way, said Martin Luther. What if that's the problem? Or says this man to Jesus, what if I can't believe and my prayer is help me believe? And sometimes frankly, that's the best I can muster. And it's enough. See, isn't that wonderful? In this particular text, it's enough to say, I, I don't even know how to believe right now, just like sometimes I don't even know how to pray. But God, you've got this and I'm gonna trust that and I'm gonna stake my life on it. It works for this man. When Jesus saw the great crowd, he rebuked the unclean spirit. Come out of this boy. And the boy convulses and everything. And then at the end, the disciples say, well, hey, why, why couldn't we cast it out? And Jesus says, well, that kind can only come out through prayer. Which I think is interesting too, because essentially Mark is making an affirmation that there's some bad things that can happen to you. And every bad, everybody's bad thing is their bad thing. And so it's, it's all relative to who you are and what you're experiencing. But there's worse things that can happen to you than some things. So now again, this is the second time. They went on from there. They passed through Galilee, come and remember way up from Caesarea Philippi. Now they're coming through Galilee. They're just now getting to the Sea of Galilee. He didn't want anybody to know he was there. And he was teaching those disciples, saying, "The Son of Man is to be betrayed into human hands, and they will kill him. And three days after being killed, he will rise again." But they did not understand what he was saying and they were afraid to ask him. And well, but now we're hoping, okay, this is the second time he's told them. So they'll get it this time, right? So after he talks about this, the disciples respond with an argument about who is the greatest. Verse 35, "He sat down, called the twelve, and said to them, 'Look, whoever wants to be first must be last of all and servant of all.'" And he took a little child and put it among them and taking it in his arms, he said, "Whoever welcomes one such child in my name welcomes me. And whoever welcomes me welcomes not me, but the one who sent me." Let me tell you folks, in first century Palestine, especially among Jews, children might be personally beloved by their mother and or father. But they weren't as a culture seen entirely as people. Judaism sort of saw life as a, as a steady upwardly trending curve until you got to about the age of your bar mitzvah, your bat mitzvah, your age of puberty, rite of passage age. Every culture almost has those, like we have confirmation at that time into adulthood. But up until that time, you were becoming, children weren't supposed to speak. They were supposed to be seen and not heard. And Jesus says, this weakest, this most vulnerable among us. That's an analogy to me. So I have to suffer and die. And do you see how absurd this is that in immediate response to that, the disciples are talking about who's the greatest? Who's the most valuable on the team? Who's the? And then now John's gonna come up and start telling on people, "Oh, Jesus, guess what we saw? We saw somebody casting out demons in your name, and we tried to stop him because he wasn't on our team. I think he might have been a Methodist." But, but Jesus said, "Don't stop him, for no one who does a deed of power in my name will soon be able afterward to speak evil of me. Whoever's not against us is for us." It's an interesting kind of live and let live, sort of like Jesus' parable of the wheat and the weeds, which you don't find in, in Mark. You know, leave it alone. And truly I tell you, whoever gives you a cup of water to drink, because you bear the name of Christ, will by no means lose the reward. So you don't have to get it exactly right and you don't have to completely fit into the box of the denomination or whatever. That's, that's threatening. You know, I'm a church bureaucrat. That's threatening to me. I'm supposed to make sure it fits in the box. That's my job, right? In, in some ways, it really is. And then Jesus goes back to the little child analogy. Now let me tell you something. If any of you put, put a stumbling block before one of these little ones who believe in me, it would be better if you had a great millstone hung around your neck and you were thrown into the sea. Matthew's Gospel talks about just a plain millstone, which was usually one that was hand cranked. It was not easy to hand crank, but, but it was hand cranked. A great millstone, on the other hand, would be one of those that you wouldn't be able to pick up as a human being and only a mule harnessed into it, you know, walked around and around in circles would be able to turn that great millstone. Now obviously, if you hung that around your neck, you wouldn't really have any, any chance. And you remember back to our first week when we were talking about biblical literalism? And all we really have are selective literalists. Most of my biblical literalist friends don't like this particular verse 43. "If your hand causes you to stumble, cut it off. Better to enter life maim than to have two hands than to go to hell. If your foot causes you to stumble, cut it off. If your eye causes you to stumble, tear it out." You know, so, so Jesus is saying there's, there's a, there's an appropriate way for us to follow. And certainly it's, it's about our personal following and discipleship. But it's even more important, if you look at the beginning, that we don't want to be a stumbling block before one of these little ones. And I think that you have to just really be careful about that. I have to be really careful about that. Not just what is my opinion about this, but how is this going to affect other people, including people that are maybe really gullible or vulnerable or easily manipulated. And you know, as hard as it is to imagine, I, I think there possibly could be some people in the world who intentionally look for vulnerable people who are easily manipulated and take advantage of them. Everyone will be salted with fire. Salt is good, but if salt has lost its saltiness, how can you season it? So I mean, salt had, you know, the preservation quality, but it also had sort of this apocalyptic sense of, it's not exactly saying you're the salt of the earth. But mainly that we need to, to preserve the innocence of these little ones. All right, now this is squirmy time for
Okay, Bishop Smith, hold on one second before you, you're moving into chapter 10, right?
Yep.
Okay, so before you do that, let me, let me stop because I think there's two questions that'll take us. You're gonna get into different territory in chapter.
Yeah, let's do that. Different territory.
So one of his questions is around the Transfiguration in general. So we're starting, we're starting chapter nine with that. There's a question around like the word Jerusalem not being in there. And how do we know that coming down the mountain leads us there? Is it just kind of following the map?
Well, if you, you really have to follow the narrative all the way because you know that he's in Caesarea Philippi right before that. And that's where, as you're the Messiah, which is as far north as you can get and still be even minimally in Jewish or even civilized territory. And then when you come on down, you come through Galilee and Sea of Galilee and everything. We don't know that yet. We're not there yet. But then it's going to tell us in a moment. And then he went on the road to Jerusalem. So you can just simply see it if you were taking your little and making X marks on your map in all of these stories. Oh, he's going from north to south. And that'll tell us that he's gonna be in Jerusalem. So that's a great question, but it, but it hasn't told us yet that that's where he's headed. I was getting ahead of myself.
Well, and I think it's interesting too, because Mark, as we know, is so quick, right? So it's like, and then he's here and then he's in this city. So to think about that being on the road, I think is still very much in the vein of how Mark writes. But the second question is, the Transfiguration doesn't really seem like, Mark has been so focused on miracles, so focused on like healings. We, so is the Transfiguration, do we feel like it's original to Mark? That might be a question. And I think at the very beginning, you know, we're talking about Mark is kind of considered the original Gospel. And then there's Matthew and Luke that are coming after that. But also like, why would this be in here?
Okay, excellent. That's
Why is it?
And I see Karen put that. So hey, Karen.
Yeah, why is it an essential part of Mark's Gospel? By the way, there's a couple things in Mark that you're like, you had so little space. Why did you put this in here?
Yeah, well, if you take the Gospel and slice it in half, one through eight and nine through 16, really one begins with the baptism of Jesus and the voice from heaven, and only Jesus knows, "You are my beloved son. With you I am well pleased. Nobody else knows. It's a great secret." Now at the end of chapter eight, the end of that first half, when nobody knows who he is, nobody knows who he is, nobody knows who he is. Now Peter says, "You're the Messiah." So they've got the right answer, but they don't have the Luther small catechism. What does this mean? Messiah, but he keeps telling them it means that I'm going to suffer. So the Transfiguration is in all of the synoptic Gospels. I believe it is central, which means Matthew, Mark, and Luke. And it is, it is another revelatory piece where now the voice comes from heaven, but it's speaking to everyone. Peter, James, and John hear it. And so it is affirmed from them, "This is my son, the beloved. And furthermore, listen to him." Now he just said the first time, now I'm the Messiah, you're right. But what that means is to suffer and die. And if you're gonna follow me, it means you have to take up your cross and follow. So now, now you have God who just appeared with Moses and Elijah, like this is awesome time in the clearest sense of that word, saying, so it's about identity. So it's about identity, Karen. It's about this, who is that masked man, you know, the Lone Ranger thing? And now we know that this is God's Son, the beloved, and now the imperative, "Listen to him." And just as his baptism prepares him for that first half of his ministry, which is the healing and the exorcisms and the teachings, now the second half is going to be really his journey to Jerusalem and his crucifixion, his death. And the Transfiguration now sort of prepares him and makes that transition, in a literary sense, to this second half of the book. Both of those are identity pieces. So I don't think this was added at another time, but I mean, we don't know, so that's a great question. But...
All right, now you can make people squirm. I just thought we...
Yeah, and the reason I say squirm is because...
From there.
I have actually preached on this text before. It's about divorce, and it's one that a lot of preachers avoid and everything, and it's in the lectionary like four times. And so it comes up a lot, and people are like, "Don't preach on that." And, you know, and so I remember one time in Boone, I just said, "I've been here a long time, y'all, and I love you, and I treasure you, and I'm asking you to trust me." But I said, "But I want you, if you're divorced, if you've ever been divorced, I want you to stand up." And so some people did, very nervously, and a few of them didn't stand up, who I knew were divorced, which is fine. And I said, "Okay, right, if you have parents or siblings who are divorced, stand up." And then a bunch of people stood up. "If you have children who are divorced, stand up." And a bunch more people stood up. And if you have, if you have good friends who are divorced, you know? And so essentially, as planned, by the end, we were all standing up. And I said, "All right, so the first thing we want to establish is this is not about us versus them. This is about something that we all acknowledge is painful, either because it happened and the reasons behind why it happened, or that it happened, you know, and we didn't want it to happen. But for whatever, it's not what we envisioned, it's not what we promised, it's not what we intended, it's broken." But now, there are also, and I want to tell you, because Scripture interprets Scripture, there are also some real different interpretations and additions in Matthew and in St. Paul and in Luke around the teachings about divorce. But I want to tell you why it's important where it is in Mark. And this is my take on it. Obviously, everything is through the Tim filter, so I'm sorry, but that's all you get, is the Tim filter here.
That's what you signed up for.
That's right. So I don't have a corner on the market of, you know, all the correct interpretation, but I've struggled with these texts a lot, so...
You might want to go back one, Tim, because I think I...
I think you're right.
I can do that for you, but I think that you want to go back, because I interrupted you as you were moving through text.
I think that...
Never mind, we'll start in Deuteronomy. Go for it.
Well, yeah, it's not letting me go back, which is...
How weird. Okay.
So I don't know why that is. Okay, it's because I hadn't, it's because I had to click on my screen before we left the buffer back. So he left that place, went to the region of Judea. Now, that's going south, right? Again, you're plotting this on the map, and crowds began to gather. It was customary. He taught them some, some Pharisees came, remember, they're trying to catch him in something, and they said, "So remember, Jesus doesn't bring this up, okay? That's the first thing. Jesus doesn't say, 'Hey, wait a minute, no, I want to tell you, stop, I want to tell you about something really important, divorce.'" The Pharisees are trying to trap him in something. "Is it lawful for a man to divorce his wife?" And Jesus answered them, "What did Moses command you?" And he knows, Jesus knows, but they said, "Moses allowed for a man to write a certificate of dismissal and to divorce her." And Jesus said, "Because of your hardness of heart, he wrote this commandment for you; but from the beginning of creation, God made them male and female. For this reason, a man shall leave his father and mother and be joined to his wife. The two shall become one flesh. They're no longer two, but one flesh. Therefore, what God has joined together, let no one separate." Now, Jesus isn't making that up, right? He's quoting Genesis. "And then in the house, the disciples asked him about this matter, and he said to them, 'Whoever divorces his wife and marries another commits adultery against her. And if she divorces her husband and marries another, she commits adultery,'" which is interesting that Jesus would say that, because in Jewish first-century culture, a woman could not divorce her husband. Back to Karen's question, is this possibly a later addition? It's actually this line, verse 12, is probably a later addition, because in the Hellenistic or Greek-Roman culture, it was allowed for a woman to file for divorce from her husband, but among the Jews, it was not allowed. You gotta realize that there's this awful thing that is still very much sadly alive and well today, and I'm even part of it in my own privilege, and that is patriarchy, that it very much a male-centered reality. And in this patriarchal first-century Jewish system and prior, it was not possible for a man to commit adultery. Only a woman could commit adultery. It was not possible for a woman to divorce her husband, only a man could divorce his wife. And it's key up here where it says, "Moses allowed a man to write a certificate of dismissal and divorce her." Now, let me show you, this is where that is referenced, in Deuteronomy 24. Did you know in the German Bible, the first five books of the Bible are not called Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, and Deuteronomy? You know what they're called? Erste Moses, zweite Moses, dritte Moses. You know, they're all, it's first Moses, second Moses, third Moses, you know, fourth and fifth Moses. The first five books of the Bible are called that. And so when you have Deuteronomy, it is attributed to Moses. And in Deuteronomy 24, verses 1 through 4, "Suppose a man enters into marriage with a woman, but she does not please him, because he finds something objectionable about her. And he writes her a certificate of divorce, and puts it in her hand, and sends her out of his house, and she leaves his house." Well, that's interesting, isn't it? What chance does a single woman who's not a virgin in first-century Jewish Palestine have to make any sort of a living whatsoever, short of going home to her family in shame for having been dismissed by her husband? Basically, none. Her options are begging and prostitution. And in fact, that's where a lot of prostitutes came from. And the man doesn't have to have any reason, maybe she's too little, or too big, or doesn't cook like he likes, or as outlined in some places in Leviticus, she broke a plate, or she burned the beans. And he could say, "I take you into the public square, and I say three times, I divorce you, and you are done." If you think about that, and if you think about Jesus in the context of bringing this little child and these vulnerable ones, and causing them to stumble, and so on and so forth, in the context of what we've just been reading, for a man to do this to his wife was to abandon her and to leave her really, really helpless and vulnerable in that culture and in that society. And what I truly believe that Jesus is saying here is, "Moses let you do that because of your hardness of heart and your stupid patriarchy." I think Jesus was saying that. And I'm telling you, you can't do that. When you make that commitment to that woman, you've got to stay with her, because she's depending on you, and her family arranged that marriage and paid you, you know, you paid a bride price, and they made this arrangement and everything, and you cannot break that covenant just because you find something objectionable about her. Now, I could be wrong about that, but let me...
I like that translation of the Bible that says, "And you can't have that stupid patriarchy." I think that's what Jesus said, right? We don't get to that. We're gonna put an end to that.
Well, and you know, Jesus has already, we just kind of skimmed right over it, but Jesus has already way been on the edge. Remember, the first several people who came to him were women, and Gentile women, and unclean Gentile women, who had, you know, sick daughters, or this, or that, or the other, or women who brazenly spoke to him in the middle of the day, which no one but a prostitute would do toward a rabbi. Over and over again, Jesus is, again, not turning upside down the strata of broken society, but setting it right side up and saying that you have value, you have image of God-ness. He even calls them sister and woman, rather than, you know, so I do believe that when he says this in this context, he's saying, "I'm not gonna make it that easy for you, just so you want to walk away whenever you can for no reason." But she can't walk away. You know, she could be stoned to death if she steps out on this marriage, or if she does any of that kind of thing. But no, Jesus says, and it's the Pharisees, remember? By this time, they're not in a good spot together. So you could argue that, and certainly other people are gonna interpret that in a different way, but I think it's a fairly compelling likelihood right here. So now, guess what, again? In this whole string of little children, and causing these little ones to stumble, and women, and Jesus blesses the little children over and over and over again, people bring these little children that he might touch them, and the disciples say, "Go away." But when Jesus saw this, he was indignant and said to them, "Let the children come to me. Do not stop them, for it is to such as these that the kingdom of God belongs. Truly I tell you, whoever does not receive the kingdom of God as a little child..." I don't think that means when you're a little child in chronological time, I think, like a little child, in the innocence of a little child, will never enter it. And he took them up in his arms and laid his hands on them and blessed them. And by the way, that's not a new concept, is it? In Isaiah, the prophet's vision for the fullness of the reign of God, you know, when the lion and the lamb lie down together, and the fatling, and the kid, and the wolf, and, you know, and the suckling child plays over the hole of the poisonous snakes, "And a little child shall lead them." Again, that innocence and vulnerability, rather than this whole sense of particularly the Pharisees. See, Jesus is in their face, saying, "It's not all about your structure and your system." So now, there's a rich man. In Luke's Gospel, he's called a ruler, but in this Mark's Gospel, he's just a man. As he was setting out on a journey, a man ran up and knelt before him and said, "Good teacher, what must I do to inherit eternal life?" And Jesus said, "Why you call me good? No one's good but God alone. Don't you know that? You know the commandments, right? You shall not murder, you shall not commit adultery, you shall not steal, you should not bear false witness, not defraud." Interesting, because defraud is not explicitly one of the ten commandments on her father and mother. And he said to him, "Teacher, I've kept all these since my youth." So again, now, see, I'm Mr. Righteous. I filled it all. I've done everything that was required of me. And now, look, look at this, Jesus looking at him, because again, looking at somebody is a deal, right? I mean, eye contact, it's important. Loved him, he loved him, and said, "Because this man, even if he's misguided, he's seeking, and he really wants to know. And he said, 'You lack one thing. Go sell what you own, give the money to the poor, and you will have treasure in heaven, and come and follow me.'" And then verse 22, "When he heard this, he was shocked." Actually, the Greek word means more like gloomy or depressed. When he heard this, he was depressed, and he went away grieving, because, I mean, he had a lot of stuff. Now, it doesn't say that he doesn't do it, but he certainly doesn't just jump at the chance, right? And then Jesus looked around and said to his disciples, "How hard it is will be for those who have wealth to enter the kingdom of God." Now, again, just like when we were talking about divorce, so easy for me to say, "Oh, this is me, but look at them. Look at them, those wealthy people." My wife and I make about exactly half what we made together five years ago, but with that half that we make financially together right now, I am still in the top 2.5% of wealthy people in the world, me, Tim. If we're talking about wealthy people, you know who we're talking about? Me. And the disciples were perplexed at these words. But Jesus said, "Children..." Now, look, he's been, "Children, children, children, children." Now, look what he calls the disciples. "Children, how hard it is to enter the kingdom of God. Easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for someone who is rich to enter the kingdom of God." And they were greatly astounded. Somebody should be keeping tab. Amazed, afraid, astounded, astonished. And they said to one, "Then who can be saved?" And then you get this incredible gospel word. And Jesus said, "Bingo. I think you might ever so slightly be beginning to get it." In other words, once you throw up your hands and say, "What's the point? I got nothing. I can't do that." And Jesus says, "And that's when maybe it's possible. Not for you, but for God. But you're only going to embrace what God has possible for you when you realize you can't do it." That's why we Lutherans are such depravity people. We're not worms, we're worm food. And to get explicit about that, when Martin Luther says that, just, I want you to use your imagination about what worms or flies use as food. That's what we are. We are nothing apart from God. Even our believing is all God. And once we surrender, like Jesus and with Jesus, and in the presence of God, then suddenly things are possible that were not possible for me. And Peter began to say to him, "Look, Lord, we left everything and followed you." So again, okay, Peter, he's still arguing, he's not getting it now. Jesus gave him a little, nice little arc pitch, you know, of the softball, and Peter just whiffed it completely. Jesus said, "Truly I tell you, no one who has left house for brothers, or sisters, or mother, or father, or children, or fields for my sake and the sake of the good news, who will not receive a hundredfold in this age, houses, brothers, sisters, mothers, children, friends, fields, persecutions." Persecutions? That's not the part I wanted, in the age to come, eternal life. "And many who are first will be last, and the last will be first." I remember as a kid, trying to get ahead of that curve, and I thought, "Wait a minute, you'll never get ahead of that curve," because sometimes I decided that I would be last, because then I could be first according to Jesus. But then if I'm first according to Jesus, then I'm gonna be last, and it got kind of circular. But the whole point is, the earthly and even Jewish religious systemic definition of power and greatness is not what you think it's gonna be. So let's try one more time, Jesus foretells. Now, here we go. You've been plotting this on the map. Now, they've been in Judea, because they came down to Judea from Galilee. Now, here we are. They were on the road going up to Jerusalem. Now, on a map, you're going down to Jerusalem in terms of going south, but you always, always go up to Jerusalem and down from Jerusalem, because it's the Holy City, plus it's up on seven hills. And so the terminology even today is, "You go up to Jerusalem." So now, we know that that's where he's been headed. And Jesus was walking ahead of them, and they were amazed, there's that word. "And those who followed him were afraid," there's that word. And he took the twelve aside again, began to tell them what was gonna happen, and he said, "See, we're going up to Jerusalem, and the Son of Man will be handed over to the chief priests and the scribes, and they will condemn him to death." Now, we know that that's what Jerusalem is for, to that earlier question, I think, maybe Pastor Ben. "And they will mock him and spit on him and flog him and kill him, and after three days he will rise again." So again, you get the resurrection prediction in Mark. So it is implied, it's just not explicit, and there are no resurrection appearances. And after Jesus says it the third time, you know, "I'm gonna get spit on, mocked, beaten, killed," and James and John, like, right after this, after... After Jesus says, "They're gonna spit on me, mock me, beat me, kill me." "Hey, I have a question, Jesus." What? "Hey, when this kingdom you come talked about, can one of us sit on your right and one on the left, huh? Can we, can we, huh, huh, can we?" Come on. I mean, they're so obtuse, right? I mean, and it's, I think it's extreme at this point in Mark's Gospel, because Mark is making the point that, no, they really don't get it. And Jesus said, "You don't know what you're asking. Are you able to drink the cup I drink, or be baptized with the baptism I'm baptized with, which actually is death, because baptism, remember, is symbolic of death, of drowning?" And they replied, "We're able." And Jesus said, "The cup I drink, you will drink. And the baptism with which I'm baptized, you will be baptized, but to sit at my right hand or my left is not mine to grant. It's for those for whom it has been prepared." So Jesus, like, "That's not my call." And now, when the ten heard this, they began to be angry with James and John. You know, because they wanted to, you know, they wanted to be first in line to the lunchroom. So Jesus called them and said to them, "You know that among the Gentiles, those whom they recognize as their rulers lorded over them, and their great ones are tyrants over them?" Again, okay, so this is worldly power. And remember back to chapter eight, when Peter said, "Oh, nope, you can't be killed, Lord." And Jesus says, "Get behind Me, Satan." Why? Because you're setting your mind on human things, not divine things. So Jesus is describing those human things here. But look at verse 43. How many times do I have to tell you, he says? "It is not so among you. Whoever wishes to become great among you must be your servant. And whoever wishes to be first among you must be slave of all. For the Son of Man came not to be served, but to serve, and to give his life as a ransom for many." Several people have preached famous sermons on this passage, but the one that comes to mind most poignantly for me is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. When, actually, it wasn't a sermon, it was more of a speech in response to a question about, you know, "How do I become great?" And he's talking especially to young black men in the early 1960s. And he says, "You can be great, because you can serve." And Jesus says, you know, the path to greatness, it's just that you've let the culture, and they didn't have that word back then, but the privilege of that culture define what greatness is. When Jesus defines it pretty clearly, it's not really questionable, it's serving. And then, after all of this, you get the healing of blind Vartanias. And so this is the second half of that inclusion, where, so, all right, the disciples still are not seeing, so they came to Jericho. You're getting pretty close to Jerusalem now. Jericho might be the oldest city in the world. But he and his disciples and a large crowd were leaving Jericho. Vartanias, son of Timias, beggar, was sitting by the roadside. And when they heard it was Jesus, they began to shout, "Jesus, have mercy on me." And many sternly ordered him, "Be quiet." And he cried out even more loudly, "Son of David, have mercy on me." And Jesus stood still and said, "Call him here." And they called him and said, "Take heart, get up, he's calling you." So throwing off his cloak, he sprang up and came to Jesus. And Jesus said, "What do you want me to do?" And he said, "Let me see again." And Jesus restores his sight, and immediately he regained his sight and followed him on the way. So. Yeah. I know that we zipped through, there's just so much here. Let me look at some of these questions. No spit this time, yeah. There's not always spit, but last week, there was spit twice, right? Jesus spit all over people. So Danielle, last time I said, "I just want to have a healing service and spit all over people." But I gotta wait for COVID to be over.
Yeah. And some of the other questions are interesting, a little bit, kind of a sidebar question around marriage and intersectionality. But one of the things that strikes me, Bishop Smith, as you were talking this week, and especially Karen, when you asked the question about transfiguration starting, we get into this on-the-roadness, where Jesus is doing kind of teaching, which is really common in Matthew, where Jesus is walking and teaching and doing this. And I think one of the things that's a little bit jarring about Mark is that you've been on the road from healing to healing to healing, and now you get Jesus saying, "Okay, let me teach you some things as we walk." And Tim, as you were marking out the journey, it made me think, "Well, the journey's a little longer this time. So maybe we've got some time to say, 'Let me tell you this, tell you this again.'" And so I think that is this one part. But it's interesting, as we're thinking about a blind man starting the transfiguration story and ending it, we are talking about, you said, "Transfiguration is this like middle point in the Gospel, where we have more revelation, and it ends in this place. It ends in this place where there is a healing, and the person is calling Jesus, 'Son of David,' calling these names. And it's still being revealed in healing. So even in these two chapters, we still have the interplay of healing in Jesus's identity and what that looks like.
Yes.
And I think that's interesting. For you, Bishop Smith, what's the importance of the two healings?
The two healings that we just were looking at?
Or the bookend of the blind, you know.
Oh, I think it's a literary device to say that the disciples are blind. They don't get it. You know, because it's okay to say, "I'm Messiah, I'm Son of Man." Okay, good, yeah, we sort of thought that, we said that, we got the right answer. But they're not even beginning to embrace what that means. And also, I think it's very much for the Pharisees. There's another kind of a parable, where Jesus explicitly says to the Pharisees, "You're the blind ones, and, you know, because you say, 'We can see, and we know how to do it, and we know all this, and we've got it all arranged.'" And my phrase, "God in a box," you know. I'm sort of in control as a religious system, and God has to do what I say, as I sort of pull God's marionette strings, because this is the system that God can work in. And we have to be really careful about that, because, I mean, even for us as Lutherans, we talk about "the" means of grace. Well, but Luther also said, "There could be thousands of means of grace. My shoestring could be the means of grace." It's just that it might not be so apparent, and maybe it maybe is not yet revealed to me how that is so, and promised to me that that is so. For Lutheran Scripture, the canon of Scripture is not closed, and never will be. Because how could it be? If God is alive, I mean, if God is dead, then Scripture is static, and it is right there where it is. But if God's alive, stuff's still happening, including revelation. Yeah, I do love how Peter feels free to just blurt out what he thinks fearlessly. But that, you know, that is an amazing thing. And I have a little bit of that in me, especially in the Conference of Bishops. I say things that people think, "I can't believe you said that."
We are shocked, Tim. Look at all of our shocked faces right now, that you have a little bit of that. Wendy has the most shocked face, right? Yeah, I think you have a little Peter in you, too.
So, but it's also marvelous that Peter, because he's a wonderful example for us, because he's such a bumbling idiot sometimes. And yet, on this rock in Matthew's Gospel, not God says, "I'm gonna build the church." And he keeps getting it wrong, and he goes away and denies Jesus at the end. You know, after he's vowed, he's not gonna do it. He does it anyway. So there's some interesting discussion, and I appreciate that Cindy and Mary are talking about, you know, women and black men and some of those things. And this is kind of intersectionality, too, of maybe our racial justice network, if you want to delve deeper into some of those questions, because those are difficult and needful topics now, more than at any time in my life that I've been able to deal with. I was alive during the 1960s civil rights movement. In fact, my dad moved to Salisbury to desegregate the school system, and we had a nice little welcome cross burned in our yard. But I was too little to understand. I was a child then. So in my adult life, you know, we have this, this sort of a unique, but terribly sad-for-what-precipitates-it opportunity to really delve into a lot of the issues of racism. And so the Racial Justice Network, if you want to do a quick commercial for that, Danielle.
Yeah.
How somebody could sign up, if they're interested in exploring that and being challenged in those realities.
Yeah, I will. The Racial Justice Network is just a place where we're having these conversations more in depth. It's racialjusticenetworknc.org, and you can sign up there, or you can send me an email at ddenise@nclutheran, and I'd be glad to fill you in. Intersectionality is in all of this, and we forget it in Scripture, because we're talking about Jews and Gentiles and children. And you mentioned children, Bishop Smith, as we think about them and not having status. What encouragement? I mean, we hear this all the time as we visit congregations, "There's no kids here. We would welcome them." I remember so distinctly, my brother's an FBI agent, and we were at his graduation, and people were, kids were crying all over the place. And the head of the FBI said, "They don't leave this room. They're allowed to cry through this ceremony." He said, "Their parents have just been away, training and being part of this community. They're not gonna miss this moment in their parents' life. You just keep that kid in here." And I was like, "They don't even say that in the church. How did they just say that at an FBI graduation?" But we want and we long to be places of welcome for children, but as you said, also for the vulnerable among us. And yet, we also do things like Peter and James and John and say, "But who's the best? And who is this really about?" Even though we know, maybe in our gut, the call is for the vulnerable, but that means giving up something. What's your encouragement to disciples in that? As we think about our texts today? Did that make sense? It may not have. What's the encouragement to people who are balancing institution and welcome? When they see things kind of going like this?
Yeah, and what I always think about is, especially the congregation I served in Atlanta, which was like over the top, high church. You don't even look from side to side, and you certainly never speak to someone inside the sanctuary. And so, you know, our question there was, so how do we balance reverence, which is what people thought they were doing, which there's a lot to be said for reverence, discipline of reverence, a piety of reverence, but hospitality? Because what if somebody doesn't know the code, and they walk in with a cup of coffee, and they walk up to somebody and say, "Where'd you get that book?" You know, because then you just bomb somebody's whole reverence service. But, you know, the reverence, the reverence is all gonna just die away, and there won't be any more reverence if there's not, if there's not a way to welcome anybody. You know, and maybe their vulnerability, like, is they just go get a cup of coffee and bring it in the church, you know? And you hear all these horrible gasps among the, you know, wealthy old ladies, you know? "She brought coffee in the sanctuary," you know? Which, maybe it's best for those of us on the inside not to, but yeah. It's always, this whole piece that Jesus is talking about is always about the vulnerable. Always, always, always. And if they don't come to Him, He goes to them and seeks them out. The man with the third hand in the synagogue, the very first one, he didn't come to Jesus, he knew better than that. Jesus said, "Hey, you over there, come here. What's the matter? Oh, in my hand?" He said, "Yeah, let me give that a look," you know? So it's always about about being aware of and intentional about not just self-preservation, because for Lutherans, that is the essence of sin, selfishness. But being aware of the needs of others around us. Anyway, our time is over, and next week is gonna be, we'll save the, can you save the chat, Pastor Danielle?
Yep.
And that way, if there are questions that we didn't get to, you know, I could either reach out to somebody. Yeah, and we can all be the vulnerable at times in our lives. We are the vulnerable from time to time. But next week, we will be looking at chapters 11 and 12. So we're coming into the homestretch here, and we're gonna be getting into the narrative of the crucifixion story. And the whole Jerusalem thing that becomes very poignant to us in this strange COVID time. Blessings to you. Thank you for being here tonight. And somebody had posted that the actual debate, debate, because this is all the preliminary stuff, you know, the talking heads saying, "Here's what they're going to talk about, and here's Pence's strategy, and here's going to be Harris's strategy." And then they're gonna have the debate, and then the talking heads are gonna say, "Here's what they did, here's what they did," you know? You remember when the news just came on at six and 11 for 30 minutes? Your only chance? And pretty much, those were exactly the same. So now.
Sounds like the glory days, Bishop Smith. The glory days of news, an hour a week, or an hour a day.
Yeah, yeah.
Blessings on your evening, and we'll see you back next week.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Good night.
Yeah.